Welcome, everybody, to the College Station ISD Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting, Tuesday, August 20, 2024. I'd like to call to order a declaration of a quorum. Seven members present. Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for being here. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We are elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We've all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district. We thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That will bring us to recognitions and our pledge.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Luther, and I'm the coordinator for our extended school year program. I have some students to introduce. This is Baron Smith, and he's a Riverbend Bear.
Hi, my name is Alex. I am 11th grade, and I go to A&amp;M Consolidated High School. Let's get ready to rumble.
I am Elena. I go to College View High School, and I am in Bridges. It's time for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Now for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, that'll bring us to Item C2. We want to recognize the artwork at the back of our boardroom by the extended school year and summer day campers, finishing up their summer before we hit back into school. So they did some great work over the summer. So make sure you check that out. Next will be C3 PLC presentations.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Rocco Grande, Principal at Oakwood Intermediate.
Here you go, guys. Thank you. I want to thank the district for providing the opportunity to Oakwood's Guiding Coalition the chance to attend the Solution Tree Summit on PLCs last month. Our team gained several specific best practices and overall guidance on how to enhance our campus professional learning community and our collaborative teams divided by core curricular subject area and grade levels. Oakwood started the work of creating a campus PLC three years ago when we initiated the first multi-tiered system of support coordinators position for our school. We followed the process of collectively establishing the school's vision, mission, collective commitments, and goals. Using both MAP and STAR data, our teams determined within each class the students who needed small group interventions and differentiated instruction to close their achievement gaps throughout the year within each unit of instruction. The summit we attended this summer gave us greater tools and understanding to promote growth in every student and to empower teachers to take the lead in their collab team meetings and in their classrooms. This summer, I learned how elective teachers and teachers in specialized programs can be in collaborative teams. The summit's presenter shared the most modern digital resources available to educators to promote growth for all students across the MTSS spectrum. Our guiding coalition of instructional coaches and administrators gained from that training, and what we've taken back to our campus, we're implementing with our teachers. On behalf of the entire staff at Oakwood, I want to thank you, Dr. Harkrider, for instilling in us a greater resolve that the path we have been on remains the best way for us to reach all students and actualize their greatest potentials in the precious two years we have them on our campus. If you'd like to ask me any questions, I will remain.
He's remaining if y'all have any questions.
And I can take these off.
Mr. Grande, so you all have been doing this two years?
This is the, we've done it for three previous years. We started this right after COVID, right in the midst of kind of COVID, is when we first funded a multi-tiered system of support. I think then we called it an implementation specialist and not a coordinator. But having and having in the master schedule for eight collaborative teams divided by four curricular subject areas and the two grade levels so that they could meet, giving them the time was the first step, and then supporting them with that position to disaggregate the data. And the way we started was with intervention, small group interventions, differentiated instruction within the classroom, and mixing it up so that students who did not need remediation also had something that they could achieve independently. When teachers are able to get together and spend the time to do that, and now with more and more experience in it, it kind of gives them the power to take it themselves.
Wonderful. Okay. Anything else? We appreciate it, man. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe Ms. Sherman is going to come introduce. Ms. Sherman is our principal at Riverbend Elementary. She's going to introduce her teachers.
Well, Mr. Horak, Dr. Harkrider, members of the board, thank you so much for allowing some of our Riverbend Guiding Coalition members to be here tonight to talk about our experience at the PLC Summit that we experienced in late July.
I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Elena Connor. I'm a third-grade teacher at Riverbend Elementary. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Harkrider and the board for allowing us to attend the High Impact Teams Institute in Austin this summer. And I also want to thank our principal, Heather. She used some of our Title I money to send 13 of us to the institute this summer. And that, being able to send that many people, meant that we had representation from every grade level, every content, including people from our Specialized Programs Department, which was a really big deal to us. So sending that large of a group allowed that big group of us to hear from the professionals at Solution Tree, all of the details of what a true professional learning community is. And that really shifted the way we pictured our professional learning community at Riverbend. And so when we came back in August, the Guiding Coalition, we were able to really speak to our teachers on our campus and give them that same knowledge because there was such a large group of us that we're able to share it with each team pretty much individually. And so we're really excited to continue the change that we started in August of what professional learning communities look like on our campus.
My name is Kevin Bradford. I'm a special education resource teacher. I've been at Riverbend since it opened in 2019. In my time as an educator, I've attended many conferences. Most of them were motivating and inspiring, but the High Performing Teams Conference by Solution Tree this summer surpassed all my expectations. In the three days of intense, meaningful, and relevant content focusing on developing successful school teams, the conference was packed with sessions and keynotes that were all connected together and made you want to get to the next session as soon as you were done with the one you were in. It was unique in that there were only five presenters for the entire conference. So they were definitely experts in the content, and they knew what they were talking about. One session that made an impact on me was titled "The One Word Every Team Must Understand: Trust." The speaker was very clear that just because a team might get along does not make them an effective or successful team. In fact, it could mean the opposite because there's not enough trust in each member to say the hard things. She gave us suggestions on how to grow trust within our teams. As a special education teacher, I also enjoyed a session called "Making Differentiation Doable," which provided easy-to-implement strategies for general education teachers that would engage learners of all abilities in the classroom content. He shared one strategy that he called "The Bin of Wonder." Makes you want to know more, huh? But the thing that stood out to me the most throughout the three days was the willingness of the presenters to meet and talk with the teams in attendance. Our campus coalition team was able to spend about 30 minutes with one of the presenter experts discussing issues that were specific to our campus and our goals. And who does that? It was definitely a tribute to how invested they were in helping teams grow and succeed. I think Bob Sanju even gave his, our principal, his cell number if we ever had additional questions or ways that he could help support us. Again, who does that? People who are given, driven to help others succeed, that's who. At the end of our second day of the conference, our principal asked each of our people about our takeaways so far. I recall saying to her that in my 33 years in public education, this was probably the best, most useful, and practical conference I've ever attended. I want to thank you again for giving our campus team the opportunity to attend. And I'll just end with, if you'd like to send us back next year, I'm all in.
Bring us to Item C4, Staff Recognitions.
Dr. Harkrider, Board of Trustees, I'm here to update you on new team members we get to welcome to the district. The first will be Dr. Letty Roman. She is our Executive Director of Elementary Education. She comes to us from Tomball ISD, where she served as the principal of Wildwood Elementary School for four years. And prior to that, she was a successful elementary principal in Magnolia ISD. Dr. Roman.
President Horak and Dr. Harkrider, board members, thank you so much for welcoming me tonight. I have been seeking excellence in education for a very long time, and that journey has taken me from teaching in England to North Carolina, across Texas, even getting to partner with Harvard University's Graduate School of Education. But I'm happy to be right back in College Station where I began learning about curriculum instruction from Texas A&amp;M University. The long way around to get back here, but I feel like I have found a home due to all of the people here, and your leadership has just been incredible. So thank you so much.
Our next new team member is Krista Thompson. She is our new Community Engagement Coordinator. She will be joining Austin Dunson's Communications Team. She's from College Station. She has served as a fitness instructor and a mentor for over 15 years. Mrs. Thompson?
All right. Thank you so much for the warm welcome. Thank you to President Horak and to Dr. Harkrider and Sarah and Austin. So I have him here with my husband, Patrick. We have three kids. We've been in the community for over 23 years, if you don't include our time at A&amp;M. Between the two of us, we're both third-generation Aggies. So Maroon definitely is in our blood all the way with over 48 people between our families that are Aggies. So, but we love the community. Very, very excited to be here. So thank you.
Our next staff member comes from El Paso ISD, Ms. Fatima Ering. She is our new PIMS Specialist. She served as an Assistant Director of PIMS in El Paso ISD for seven years. She has 12 total years of experience in teaching and leadership. Ms. Ering?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. I'm glad to be here. I love College Station so far, and I'm looking forward to working with Heather and Sarah and everyone. Thank you.
Our next staff member is out sick, Mr. Chad Branowski. He is going to be the new administrative intern at College View High School. That position was a principal position. We recently had a retired staff member, so we actually reclassified that into an admin intern, and he will work closely with Mr. Suthard in making sure that students grow at College View High School. He has served as a science teacher at A&amp;M Consolidated for eight years, and we look forward to supporting him in his new journey. Last but not least, Natalie Peweala. She is currently the direct, or currently was the actual coordinator, sorry, of digital learning in College Station ISD. She was, she is now the Director of Digital Learning. She is coaching and supporting 23 teachers on campuses that are actually ambassadors for digital learning. These teachers are taking the forefront of innovative instruction to enhance learning through the digital learning process. We would like to congratulate Natalie on her work the last two years in College Station ISD, and definitely look forward to the new processes and the growth that she does with the DLAs.
Thank you. I'm here with my boys, or two of my boys, Toby, who is a new graduate of A&amp;M, and Tyce, who is a senior at College Station High School. I am thrilled, thank you. I am thrilled to continue growing digital learning in College Station, along with our DLAs, and Lauren Feitner, who is our district coach. And we are just excited to continue the collaboration with our technology department within CNI for the growth of our students and teachers.
All right. Congratulations, everyone. Welcome. Brings item D1, Board Reports. I don't know if, I know one.
I've got one, yeah.
Right ahead.
I'd like to share a little bit about Education Foundation because they are off-and-going strong already. So this year's theme is CSISD Rock Stars. And if you have not seen that video, I highly recommend finding that somewhere and checking that out. But they have visited all 19 campuses to present the employee-giving campaign checks back to the schools. And so all of that's been well-received, and they anticipate raising over $200,000 with 60% of our CSISD employees participating. And if you don't know this program, that means that 60% of our staff of our district give back to the Education Foundation from what they make. And I think that's because they believe in what the foundation's doing. So also, teacher grant applications are open, and they're due October 1st, but it's not too early to get your applications in because there's $325,000 designated to be given out in grants. So.
I don't think there were any other board reports yet. Okay. That'll bring us to Superintendent Update, Dr. Harkrider.
Yeah, we got a busy week. Obviously, board meeting tonight, then the Brian College Station Chamber Economic Outlook Luncheon is tomorrow. And also tomorrow evening, we have our College Station ISD CT Ag Center grand opening. It's from 5:00 to 8:00. If you'd like to get out there, it's a come-and-go event, so nothing official. You have to be there right at 5:00 o'clock. So we're looking forward to Kevin showcasing that facility with all of our teachers and staff members. August 27th, we've got our special board meeting so we can have our Team of Eight training. And then Monday, September 2nd, is Labor Day, which will be a staff and student holiday.
All righty. Bring us to Item E, Hearing of Citizens. During this time, we will hear from citizens who registered to speak prior to the meeting in accordance with Board Operating Procedures. The Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers regarding items not on the agenda. Comments related to items on the agenda may be discussed during deliberations on that specific agenda item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The board asks those addressing the board refrain from derogatory comments. I'd also like to add that we want to make sure that the public comments are in good taste, and ask that you refrain from identifying any people by name. We will take that up in separate session if need be. Our first speaker listed here is Mr. Stefan Tower. See here? Okay. Our second speaker is Stefan Leo Tower. And our third one is Ms. Anne Newell Fugate. Okay, those were the only three. And if we don't have those speakers here, we will move on to Item F, Consent Agenda. Those items are Item G, H1, H2, H3, H4, I1, and I2, J5 through J8.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. That will bring us to Item J1, where we will open the public hearing. Public hearing for the 24-25 budget and tax rate discussion.
Ms. Wilson.
President Horak, Dr. Harkrider, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present on our 24-25 budget as well as our tax rate. So tonight, we have to adopt three legally adopted budgets. That's your general fund, your debt service fund, and your food service budget. So the first one we're going to look at is the general fund. So some of the budget assumptions that we put in place when we were building this budget was, we had to take in consideration the loss of Escher funding. So those funding sources went away as of end of September of this next school year. We had to look at increase in utility costs. Of course, in the month of July, we approved a 2% midpoint raise for all pay families with the exception of bus drivers. The bus drivers were able to receive a 2.5% raise. That was to get them up and be competitive in that pay family. We did budget some additional things in there for beyond district travel, just to make sure we have funds available, and our teams are very competitive. And we want to make sure that they have the funds available to travel and to compete further than the district level. There are a set of BAN uniforms in this budget as well as additional teacher incentive program. That's something that's really kind of a wash. It's between, it's an increase in revenue, but it's an increase in expenditures as well. So you're going to see both of the revenue and the expenditures go up for that. Our departments worked really hard to try to get the budgets down, as well as the campus staff, and they were able to decrease the budget across the board, mainly in those different departments for supplies and contracted services and things by about 7%. That was really kind of their goal that was set out. We did approve in the month of June a healthcare contribution increase for our teachers, and that was really a blessing for them. We have minimal enrollment growth built in this budget, but I think when you see the numbers, you're going to see and hear what we're starting out the year at. So I think we're going to have favorable growth this school year. And then there's some hold harmless built into the budget. So you're going to see some revenue increases in the general fund as well as in the debt service fund. Both of those are because of the fact there was a homestead exemption increase from $40,000 to $100,000. So this is when they're going in and back in the formulas where if we had a loss in funding due to the increase in homestead exemption, the state has made up some of that adjustment. So you're going to see that, some of the revenue numbers. Just to make sure that we're all comparing apples to apples, I pulled the T2 values. Those are the comptroller values out on the comptroller's website to kind of look at a value increase for our school district. And when you look at the 2024, that's an estimated increase based on our certified tax values, or where we anticipate that to be. The importance of looking at taxable values, T2 values, is of course, that is how the state assigns the local fund assignment. And I'm going to show you real quick because that's really kind of based on a balancing cup. Some people think when we get an increase in state value in property value, that that means there's additional funding for school districts, but that's really not the case. When there is an increase in property values, it's an adjustment in our cup. So our cup is filled based on formulas. The formulas are built off the type of students that we serve as well as the students coming to school. So we call that average daily attendance. That is what decides what our cup is. And then, per the values is how we fill our cup. For example, if our values are up, the local taxes have a larger share of the cup, meaning state has less of a portion of the cup. And then you get to the far right where you collect more in the local share than you do your formula say, then that money goes to the state. So what I'm trying to say is make sure everyone understands that when our property values go up, that does not mean the school district is additional funding for day-to-day operations of a school district. And so that's really kind of what's depicted here. So our proposed budget is on the screen right now. There's $106 million, .9 million in local funds. That's really made up those tax property values, makes the majority of that. State funding is $40 million, and majority of that is made up by the formulas, but there's about $8 million in there called TRS on behalf. That TRS on behalf is really just a booking entry. You're going to see an increase in expenditures and an increase of revenue by the exact same amount. It's just where we have to book where the state pays a portion of our teachers' retirement, and that's just a booking, and it's within the $40 million there. And then federal funds, our federal funds went down this year just because they did an adjustment to how much we could recoup in charge funding. So the district lost about $1 million in federal funding for that purpose. And then because we were receiving the Escher funds, we were getting to charge indirect cost on those Escher funds, which was attributed to about half a million in the federal funds. So we lost both of those funding sources in this next fiscal year. Our expenditures are going to attribute to about $153.3 million of our total expenditures, which brings on a 12-month budget, a deficit of $4.9 million. I just kind of want to point out, how does our dollar work? Because I think it's very important to understand that over 60% of our dollars is spent directly into the classroom. And you might feel like that's not enough, but please look at the next category because there's 1,250 of every student. So this is how much money we get per student, and that's how it's laid out. So 1,250 is spent on maintenance and operation, but that is contributed by the utilities, gas, electricity to run a campus, as well as the insurance to run a campus. If anybody knows anything about inflation and what's going on in your households with insurance increases right now, same things happen with the school district. We were blessed that our insurance came in a little bit less this year, which was a huge blessing due to some capacity, and I'll touch on that later. But they're huge costs. So that's 1,250. Next is followed up by school leadership. That is the principals on campus, your counseling staff on campus, and then extracurricular and transportation makes up a majority of the cost of our students. So comparative expenditures, I'm going to go ahead and pass through this, but I just wanted to point out that 83% of our payroll is, 83% of our total budget is actually payroll cost. The other is made up of contracted services, utility, insurance, and just day-to-day supplies for our campuses. And last year, it was like 82 and 1/2, and I really had that on that slide. I'm sorry I didn't pull through. So the general fund expenditures for 24-25, you can kind of see how it lays out. Instruction is like directly in the classroom, and then you look at the next one, and that's really just your library. So 58.15% of the total budget is spent directly in the classroom, and then your library is followed close by, and then CNI. And then CNI development is really staff development for your teachers. And then, of course, you've got instructional leadership, campus administrator, guidance and counsel, that kind of explain each other. Health services, of course, is the nurses on campus. Student transportation is just to transport the students, and that's really a good cost because our buses are actually coming out of bond funds. So those are just the day-to-day operations of our transportation facility. We have a little bit of money in food service in the general fund, a majority of that is budgeted in federal funds. Co-curricular, your extracurricular activities make up 3.82% of your budget. Your general administration make up 3.38%. And again, that maintenance and operation, which is your insurance, utilities, and things like that, 11.75. Security services, that's one that went up this year, just trying to get in compliance with legislation changes. And this will be a full year of budgeting for security services on every campus. That makes up a portion of our budget. Of course, there falls data processing. That's your computers and things on your campuses and the software to run those computers, community services, and then your really kind of your final big one there is your appraisal office. And so that makes up the $153.5 million of expenditure budgets. So here is a total look at the proposed general fund. Of course, you've got your revenue and your expenditures, and if you were looking at it on a 12-month basis, which we're going to go ahead and adopt a 12-month budget, it's $4.9 million deficit. A lot of that is made up, of course, from those loss in ESER funds and then the 2% increase in our salaries, and that makes up a majority of that difference. Another thing that is in here is teacher incentive program. We see an increase in that, and so we've accounted for those funds. However, we're going to close our budget this year for 10 months and switch to a different fiscal year. So when you close your budget in a 10-month, we're going to stop in 10 months. What that means is our teachers have already worked a full year. Our, most of our administrators that are on an August 1 contract, they're going to work a majority of their year as well. And so because of that, we're going to expense those, but we're going to save on July 1 contracts, and we're going to save on utilities and insurance and hourly employees over the summer months. So that's going to make up that positive fund balance that we're going to see moving in. That's the $1.9 million fund balance that we're going to see added at the end of the fiscal year because we changed that year-end to June 30. So the next one I want to present is on our debt service fund. You're going to see that hold harmless I talked about in the local funds, and that's due to the homestead exemption change. And then you're also going to see the bond sale. So here's just a look of the debt service budget. We have a balanced budget. We're going to bring in $41.8 million in local. That's tax revenue. And then the state is going to help us out with $2.1 million. And the reason why they're doing that is because the homestead exemption changed. It's not based on a cup when you're talking about debt service. It's actually based on your property taxes that you bring in. So when they decrease how much property taxes we're going to bring in because the homestead went from 40 to 100,000, that's a loss of revenue for the school district. So what the state did is went in and covered for a majority of the loss that a school district was going to utilize with that loss in the homestead exemption. So the state is going to contribute $2.1 million to our debt service fund. Our other expenditures or just to pay down that debt, that's your your payback of your bonds that you sell. And then the other uses is just set aside for refunds on tax purposes. The food service is 2% of midpoint, is going to see a majority of the increases in that. Of course, they had the healthcare contribution increase. One thing that wasn't budgeted in the past that we're budgeting right now at the beginning of the school year is commodities. In the past, that's been about $613,000. That's going to be an increase in revenue and increase in expenditures as well, but it's going to inflate that budget a little bit higher than you've seen in previous years. And so I just want to bring that to your attention. And I also want to bring to your attention that this budget is based on no increase to meal costs, and that has been the case since we think about 2017 was the last time we actually increased meal costs for our families. And so I do want to point that out. Here's a look at the budget. It's a balanced budget as well. We anticipate to bring in $9.9 million and expense about $9.9 as well. So the next thing I would like to talk about is the tax rate. So again, I want to point out, though, if you look at our tax rate, we know for sure it's the lowest, one of the lowest. Last year was actually the lowest by a little bit more, but the lowest in 20 years. So this are really kind of historical lows that you're looking at. And I think if we get really curious and go back even further than that, we might be looking at more like a 30-year historical low. The tier rate is based on, our tax rate is a little bit crazy. It's based on a two-tier system, and that's for your maintenance and operation. The first part of that tier system is set by the legislation. It's called a maximum compressed rate. It's based on the growth of your property value to a floor, and our district hit the floor. The floor is .6169. That's the lowest that we can bring tier one. So then there's a second tier, and they call that enrichment funding. It's made up of golden pennies and copper pennies. So the golden pennies are really, there's five pennies in there that, there's five pennies that doesn't require voter approval, and then there's three additional ones that do. College Station has approved the three additional ones, and so we take advantage of the eight golden pennies. They're golden pennies because the property in Austin ISD is worth higher than the property in College Station. So when we we levy those pennies, we actually get what Austin gets for their pennies. So that's why they're called enrichment pennies. And so they're very, very valuable to a school district to make themselves very, you know, competitive with everything. So the other is the nine copper pennies. Right now, College Station does not access those pennies. We just access the eight. So the proposed tax rate on the maintenance and operation is the 6969, but it's made up of two tiers. The proposed total property tax is 6969, and then 2760 for INS. With the INS, we promised our voters that we would go no more than two pennies when we did our bond presentations. We are only at .013. We think it'll hold there because we've got capacity within our debt structure to be able to sell those remaining bonds. We sold a set of bonds this school year for about $94 million, and we're going to sell those future bonds in the future. But our system is set up that has capacity that we're going to be able to slide those in and hopefully hold that tax rate where we're at right now. So that's a very big positive for our school district. So the tax rate that the district could be proposed in total would be .9729. Do I have any questions?
So going back, we've had no increase in state funding since 2019, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And we've actually lost a couple million dollars in federal funding. You've got ESER that rolled off. We have inflation that's happened since then. I think the cost of our fuel for the buses is up a couple hundred grand, if I recall correctly. And we get funded on average daily attendance, a snapshot date, not our enrollment.
Yes, sir.
So, and if you look at our budget, where we are now may not necessarily be where we are at the end of the year.
That's correct.
Where you have potential to actually balance the budget and not have a deficit potentially.
Potentially.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, those are great points, Dr. Payne, because none of us, I mean, I'm assuming none of us really want to have a deficit budget going going forward, but I mean, those are the things that are doing it, right? And put Shar's in that bucket, the loss of the Shar's funding as well. So I personally think we have come up with a budget that is going to work for us this next year, and obviously with the change to the 10-month to be able to to make it work even better and add to the fund balance. But I mean, I still see it as a sustainability issue, as you talk about. And so I hope we continue to push back to where this money comes from, as you showed, with the cups, right? It's not, we are not getting the extra money that comes locally. It comes, it it just all balances out. The state gives us less. So I mean, we're still in a, we still have a place to improve, and we need to because we should be able to keep up with that inflation and also be able to help our staff and teachers keep up with inflation. So I don't know if I'm saying this the wrong time since we're at the hearing, not the not the vote that's coming up, but.
I think that was my frustration in the workshop is we can't, we can't make a bigger cup, right? In the private sector, you can go raise your prices, you can sell more. We're restrained by the state's guidelines. And like I said before, but they get a raise and our teachers get a cost of living adjustment.
I think that's a very important, because there's so many things I hear during the year where they're coming to us with higher cost, and we'll tell them, you know, like our cup is fixed. I mean, we can't, our funding is fixed. But they tell me they have to increase their staff costs and things like that. And so, yes, those are definitely things that we're faced with.
Their phrase is no new revenue, but you can show that we're, we need, the revenue would help, but we're not generating new revenue because of raising the taxes. So it's a word, it's word games.
I will say that we talked about this in workshop, but we do have to give some credit to the to the district because our students are still going to go to school, and they're still going to be able to do the things that we want them to do at school. And so we have to give some credit for, in the middle of a year where budgets feel tight, that you guys have done the work to make sure that our students are still going to go to school and have a great experience. So that's a good thing.
Well, and it's always better to be proactive than reactive. And you mentioned in workshop, you know, hypothetical about the state ban or the high school bans and making state and this and that, and, you know, making sure that if both of them make it, we don't have to make a decision on who's going and who's not. Those are just being the proactive part of it because I guess if our students weren't any good at anything, it'd be a little easier, maybe. Hate to say that. But I mean, we're pretty good. I mean, our kids do great things, and that's throughout the district. And I don't want to sit up here and be one that holds them back from doing it. So I appreciate y'all digging in deep on that part and recognizing and bringing it to our attention that that's a possibility we've got to deal with. So, you know, we talked about it for a few months, deficits, and I'm with you, Ms. McAdams, no one ever wants to adopt a deficit budget, but it's the facts of life right now for this year, I guess, with just school districts in general in Texas. We can say it till we're blue in the face that, you know, the legislature's sessions, they let us down in this and that, and we hope that the next session is better off. But I, knowing what the numbers could have been and where they're at, and knowing that in that deficit is about $2 million in teacher raises and things like that, and, and yes, could we, I think you mentioned it one time, Mr. Deckard, it's not a cost of living increase or anything. We get that, we understand, but I'm not going to sit up here and not give anything out. I can't, I can't go home at night for sure. But we, we and y'all as the administrators are doing everything we possibly can. And to Mr. Ben's point from workshop, yes, it stinks to talk about what could be if something doesn't happen, but we can't, we can't predict that. We can't funnel that. We just have to prepare the best way we can. And yes, you want to plan ahead, but we can only plan ahead so far. And so we have to go by the rules that TEA tells us. You're doing a fantastic job of bringing us up to speed, obviously with the 12-month, 10-month deal coming up. It's unfortunate, but we opened last week. We had a ton of kids on campus and a ton of happy kids on campus, and we're rocking and rolling, and I appreciate all y'all out there, administrators, teachers, faculty staff, everybody. Thank y'all for getting us through last week because even it's a three-day week, I was glad to put my kids back in school. So I appreciate what y'all do because I see it when they come home and they're excited. So thank y'all for that.
And to echo on that to our community members, people who are here and care, it matters if you communicate with your legislators, it matters who you vote for. So please get out and encourage our legislators in the state to fund public education.
I just want to thank you for doing, we're being asked to do more with less, and I think you've done a great job of accomplishing that without sacrificing the quality of education that we're trying to accomplish here in CSISD.
Thank you. I'm excited about this next year. I think we'll continue to dive into it. I think we've got a great leadership team set up that we will always put kids first and what's right for education.
So I want to just beat this dead horse a couple more minutes. So when I get my tax statement from the appraisal district, and it shows that the value of my home has gone up 9.5%, and I think, I think in College Station ISD, the average increase this year is 9.5%, right? That does not mean that CSISD is getting a 9.5% increase in property taxes to, is that right?
True.
Okay. Because a lot of that money is going back to the state of Texas through recapture, compression, and so forth. So in fact, how much are we capped pretty much on how much of an increase we can get each year from property tax revenue?
You're kept at 10% that will flow through, yes. Your values might go up, but they only can charge you tax on a 10% increase in your value.
No, I meant that the district can collect, just in general.
Oh, yes, sir. So the tier system is set up where what happens is the cup, for example, is filled with basically formula funding. And so we determine what kids are going to school, what kids are actually showing up at school, and they're typically, typically, excuse me, education. So are we educating a special needs kid, a career in technology kid and things? And that decides what our cup level is. And then the state comes in and says, based on those comptroller certified values, your T2 values, what your local share of that cup is. And so based on those, they'll figure out with the MCR, which is the maximum contact rate, they'll multiply that times your certified values, and they'll tell you that's the size that they're going to, that you locally have to fill in that cup. And if there's anything that doesn't get you to the top of the cup, the state will come in and fund that additional money. And if your cup, if that local share is higher than your cup, that money that flows out gets picked up and sent out to other school districts and called in recapture. So it doesn't matter with our values going up. If our values go up 10%, then that just means our cup changes the way it looks, but we don't get additional funding.
Okay. And so whether inflation was 8% in 2022 and it was almost 5% in 2023, that, that does not get necessarily, the formula for our cup does not change based upon inflation and all these other increased expenses that school districts have, right?
That is correct. The legislative looked at that in the past, but right now, we're not even funding on enrollment. So when we look at enrollment, we actually fill the class based on enrollment, but then we get funded on average daily attendance. That is at $6,160 per student, and then the additional comes from the special programs that the kids participate in to make up a weighted average daily attendance is what they call it. But there's not an increase, no, there's not an inflationary factor built into the formulas at all. The last time we were able to see an increase in the funding formulas on a per-student basis was 2019. We have seen a little bit of funding. For example, we got $15,000 per campus for safety money. That did not cover what it costs for us to put a safety officer on those campuses. And so those are, that's attributing to the deficit as well as some of the unfunded mandates that a school district is seeing in addition to no additional funding.
So that goes back to what Dr. Payne was saying with using this opportunity with the news legislative session coming up to talk to our legislators and let them know how important this is because, yeah, I just, it's very frustrating for me as a taxpayer to see these increases in taxes and, you know, and on a local level, we don't benefit from that to a great extent. And so, and I think, I just hope more people realize that and more people communicate with their Texas legislators about that particular issue.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll open for public comments regarding the 2425 budget and tax rate, if anyone is here to speak on that. Okay, we will close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. J2, consideration and possible adoption of the 2425 general fund, food services and debt service fund. I don't know that we can go back in our agenda currently, so we can have you sign up at our next meeting as we've got to keep moving through our agenda for the budget and things like that, but I appreciate it. Can I do, I don't think I, yeah. No, I can't, I can't adjust the agenda based on that. All right. No, sir, there's not. No, sir, it's, it's, it's an item on the agenda. Item. No, sir, it's, it's, it's an item on the agenda, item E. There's not, there's not an agenda item for it, for hearing as citizens at the end. No, sir, I cannot move from the agenda as stated.
Will be given, are we in the agenda?
Yes, sir, you were given it 72 hours prior. So we're going to have to move on. Thank you, sir. J2, consideration and possible adoption of the 2425 general fund, food services and debt service fund budgets as presented in public hearing. Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Horrick, Dr. Harkrider, it's the administrative recommendation to approve the 2425 food service, debt service, and general fund budget as presented in public hearing.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Ege. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. That will bring us to J3, consideration and possible adoption of the 2425 College Station ISD tax rate and approval of resolution. Ms. Wilson.
The district published a notice to public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate in the newspaper on August 10. That proposed was 6969 for maintenance and operation and an interest seeking of 276. So that is what we were presented tonight, and that's what the board would like to adopt. If so, it's the administrative recommendation that the Board of Trustees of College Station Independent School District approve the resolution to adopt a maintenance and operation tax rate of 6969 and an interest and seeking tax rate of 276 for a total of 9729, and the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 9729, which is effectively a 2.8% increase in tax rate.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further question or discussion?
Just a quick comment that we didn't talk much about the rate itself, but really, I think we are getting a lot of bang for our buck for just over one cent raise in the INS for, you know, the large amount of bond money that our voters approved and all the work that we're going to be able to do with those funds. So, I mean, thanks for, of course, the taxpayers for approving that, but also, I mean, the administration and the team that's going to use that money wisely so we will be able to maintain that low, low, low tax rate that you talked about.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Item J4, consider authorizing the superintendent to renew insurance coverage for the property and casualty, general liability, auto liability, and physical damage, school leaders, underground storage, and crime fidelity for 2425 fiscal year. Ms. Wilson.
So this is a little bit of exciting news. We go out with Anco Insurance and Company, and we received bids on over 61 various carriers to come up with our plan. One of the great things that we do with property and casualty is we layer the plan that allows us to be insured because we're such a large insurance. We have over $626 million to be insured. So what happened this year, they were able to expand those layers, and doing so, we were able to decrease the cost of property and casualty, which is really kind of unheard of right now. So it's really a big blessing. So property and casual, we went down $336,000, and then the other ones went up marginally for a total decrease of $312,072, and that's over a 12-month period of insurance. Do I have any questions or concerns?
I have no idea what she's talking about.
That's scary.
Motion to approve is presented.
We have a motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Ben. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. That will bring us to item N, adjournment.